Okay, I believe it is almost approaching our hour to clock, so we will get started. If everyone will stand, I ask the commissioners on the board to have the invocation and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
That's right. Dear heavenly Father, we are thankful for this new year. Well, we thank you for the years in the past, well, we thank you for all that was accomplished last year. Lord, we thank you for our great state, our great nation, and this great county. Well, we just pray that all that we deliberate on today, the decisions to be made, Lord, would be run by you, and we just thank you and give you praise for everything that is accomplished here. And, Lord, we just thank you for our citizens, Lord, I thank you for this board, and just thank you for the fellowship that we have with one another. So, Lord, we just ask all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will call the recommended, it's kind of board of commissioners to order. First item on business is approval of the amendments for the special meeting on November 22nd, 2017, our regular meeting on December 4th, 2017, and our joint meeting with the Board of Education on December 4th, 2017. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the amendments for the dates this made and based on corrections that are submitted.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made and promptly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing on, do I hear, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that be approved of the agenda before this motion.
Motion's been made promptly second to approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, delegations. Okay, the first one we're going to have is Peter. Rachel Bellis is here, and she has a presentation, PowerPoint. Okay, we'll turn it over to you.
I have packets for you, and either side of the packets is a color copy of the PowerPoint. I was told where the screen is situated, it might be easier to have that gray card here. Good morning, Chairman Hoffler and Honorable Commissioners. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share with you some useful information this morning. My name is Rachel Bellis, and I'm the manager of local affairs in the court investigations department with PETA. Our goal today is to impress upon you the need for a dog chaining ban in Gates County. We have been coming to this county for several years now, and we have assisted countless families and their companion animals. We are available for animal emergencies 24/7, 365 days a year. Despite our efforts, we know that we are swimming upstream, and for every animal whose quality of life we can improve in some small way, we know that there are dozens whom we don't know about, that we can do very little, suffering in the bone-chilling cold, blistering heat. PETA's Community Animal Project, or CAP, is a small hands-on division that responds to calls for assistance from residents within a roughly two-hour radius of our office in downtown Norfolk. Many calls for help come from this area, where both services and resources are limited. CAP serves thousands of animals every year, mostly outdoor dogs who are chained or penned, by delivering straw bedding in the winter, toys, custom-built dog houses, flea and fly strike prevention, deworming medicine if needed, and providing free transport to and from our mobile clinics. We also do a lot of education with dog owners, we do grooming as well, nail trimmings, we'll bring back animals to groom. We have a fleet of mobile spay neuter clinics, which travel as far north as Gloucester and as far east as Concordia, where we park right on the Virginia-North Carolina border, to help serve as many animals as possible in these areas. We offer low-to-no-cost spay-neuter surgeries, and we never turn anyone away based on their financial condition. Since the program began in 2001, we have spayed and neutered over 150,000 dogs, cats, and rabbits. We give free rides to and from spay-neuter surgeries. Both dogs in these pictures are from Gates County. If someone wants to get their animal spayed or neutered, but they don't have transportation, we will pick them up, take them to our clinics, and return them home. We also deliver sturdy, custom-built dog houses, which we build at our Norfolk headquarters. They have changed over the years, and they have flaps in the open, and archways to keep the wind out. There's wood that comes down to keep, for shade for the animals. They're raised off the ground, so that you don't have to worry about flooding. And these dog houses, they have different sizes depending on the size of the dog, and they last for many, many years. We generally deliver these dog houses for free. What we do a lot of times is, you know, if we see a dog in a situation like on the left, we'll say, you know, if you let us spay your dog, we'll bring you one of these dog houses for free. Generally, they do cost us over $300 to make, and that's something that we take of ourselves, and we deliver them most of the time for free. During winter, as we are in right now, we deliver straw bedding. Our volunteers and staffers do this seven days a week. The straw bedding is, we do this for free. It insulates the dog houses, it makes the dogs a little less cold, it can also soak up some of the moisture that we find in the areas muddy, or if there's snow on the ground. Extremely important that we do this, and we also have bags of straw that we leave at our Norfolk headquarters, right outside, that people can just pull up and take as many bags of straw. We actually do that, all the staffers come down during certain days, and we'll bag straw and divide up the bales of straw. We do this all throughout winter. We help because dogs need us to be their voice, and we educate their owners. We help provide the necessities that they need while trying to change laws to give them better protection. When you allow a dog to be chained up, an owner has very little responsibility. They put the dog on a chain, and more often than not are forgotten about, like JR, the dog you see in this photo, whose owner we have been helping since 2015. Staffers found JR just this last weekend, severely underweight, with an abdomen that was so distended, his sternum was being pushed out. He had cherry eye, which is a painful eye condition, and several infected sores, some of which have straw growing into the scabs. JR was heartworm positive, something we see in countless chained dogs, and after discussing his condition with the owners, it was decided that euthanasia was the kindest option for this severely suffering dog. There are currently seven dogs on this property, six of whom are chained. There are also two cats and three chickens. Chained dogs are often denied adequate shelter. Many have flimsy plastic barrels, like you see here, which afford no protection from the weather if they have any shelter at all. And this dog that you see in this photo, we delivered a dog house to him just a few days later. They are left outside in all kinds of weather. Shubby, who you see on the left, was tangled, this is exactly how we found him, he could not move, he was so tangled, in the snow, and he was actually seized by animal control since he was unable to reach his food, water, or shelter. He had been that way for at least a few days and nights. And then you also see the pup on the right, left in the mud, this is also how we find many chained dogs, they're just left out, he has basically no dry spot to go to. This is also the dog that you see here, this is the dog who perished this past summer. This dog had nowhere to escape the heat. They're also often denied potable water, as you see, and all these, the dogs you see in these photos do come from Gates County. This is not an uncommon occurrence to find water that is filled with algae or black with dirt, if they have any water at all, and obviously, right now, what we're finding is that the top layers of the water, they're frozen, and which also tells us that this dog has not been checked on for at least a few days, if the water has been able to get like that. They are denied nutritious food, and this is exactly how we found this dog, right here, with no food or water. As you can see, he's on quite a heavy chain as well. This dog was surrendered along with two other dogs on the property because the owner was unable to take care of them. Chained dogs are unable to escape, they are trapped, and they are vulnerable to cruel people, other dogs who are running at large, other animals. They have nowhere to go, if you can imagine being chained up 24/7, 365 days a year, you are trapped in that one spot. This is also a public safety hazard, as researchers show that chained dogs are almost three times as likely to attack as a dog who is not chained. Obviously, children and the elderly are most vulnerable. Dogs who are chained are forced to sleep, eat, live, defecate in the same area, they become extremely protective of that space. Other communities have passed chaining ordinances. All of Hampton Roads, where we're located, has either a chaining ban or a chain limitation. We are working with Halifax County right now to pass a chaining ban, although several cities within the county have passed chaining bans. We have just started talks with North Hampton County as well. So far, so good, they seem very supportive of passing a chaining ban. And we are not going anywhere, we want to continue to help. When a community passes a chaining ban, we print out flyers, we'll print posters, we'll put up billboards, we make these magnets for law enforcement, for their animal control or the police, that they can put on their vehicles, that say, you know, chaining is now illegal in this county. What we did with Scotland Net when they passed their chaining ban, we made flyers that fit into their water bills, so that when the water bill went out, everybody in Scotland Net got this flyer saying that, you know, chaining will go into, the chaining ban will go into effect on this particular date. So we are happy to help in any way that we can. And that is the presentation, thank you so much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, certainly the pictures were very eye-opening for us, if I can comment, does anyone have any comments?
I have a couple. Well before you get to the last couple of slides I wrote down, North Hampton and Halifax, I go through there fairly all in, and I went through there Saturday. And this billboard, I think it's right here at the end, just making the, this billboard in the bottom corner. I'm going to speculate real close, I think there's six of those about quarter of a mile apart, maybe.
Is that in Welton?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, and I think right now we've got the cold dog one, so, yeah.
Yeah, but you still got the year went up, the cold dog.
The fly stroke.
Yeah, the fly stroke. PETA responsible 100% for putting those signs up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. It appears that, in our dog world, it's a thing that, I think that we've gotten to an agreement with PETA and some of our citizens, the citizens who have come here specifically. I think we're getting close to an agreement, except for the tethering, pretty much, is that fair to say?
I would say that's probably the biggest issue, yeah.
So, in the real world, and this is not combative here, this is just, to hear you say it. So, Joe has a dog, he goes to work every day, and he doesn't have, he doesn't have a fence, but he's got a dog, he loves his dog. If, and I'm really seeking a response that is a solution in asking this question. What is, in the real world, what is he supposed to do with his dog? He has a big dog, this is an example here, it's a big dog, and he can't leave the dog in his house while he's not there. He doesn't tether his dog, and he can't afford, legitimately can't afford a fence in the area outside. What is, taking that scenario, what is Joe supposed to do so you can understand?
Well, I mean, ideally, we would love, dogs are pack animals, they want to be part of the family, so, I mean, I was just on my coworkers the day, I'm right here, I couldn't, I didn't even get my dog last night, I couldn't imagine leaving her outside, so ideally, what Joe would do is bring his dog inside and walk him, so that he gets his exercise. If you can't keep him inside, then, you know, there are solutions available as far as fencing solutions. He doesn't have to fence in his entire yard, but there are a lot of solutions at Lowe's, Attractor Supply, at Home Depot, so that he can keep his dog contained while not on a chain, and then, when he gets home, bring the dog inside, take him for a walk. There are solutions.
And I realize we're very cold right now, the fact that a dog needs to be.
Right, absolutely.
In the cold right now, I completely understand that, and the heat being the same way, you know, but, so, a satisfactory fenced area for Joe's dog, outside of the heat and the cold, just the perfect weather, the dimensions, and Joe's got a big dog, so the dimensions of that fence need to be what?
I think 20 by 20 is a great start. That's asking a lot of certain, you know, certain folks who don't have, you know, a whole lot of money to spend on a pen of that size. 10 by 10, I think, is the minimum for a dog, because a 10 by 10 is easy to get, because they already have them made at Lowe's, for example, you can get it that's 10 by 10, and it, you know, takes a little while to set up. But once you put a dog house in there, you're taking away space, and if you're not cleaning out that pen, you know, so, if an, when ordinances are passed like this with chaining bans, there has to be, there has to be provisions that are in there that say, you know, if you have the dog in a pen, they need to be cleaned out, the pen has to have a door that works so that you can get inside, many times we find pens that you have to remove cinder blocks and wires and stuff to get into, they're sort of makeshift. I mean, but to answer your question, 20 by 20 is a decent size, if you can't bring his dog inside the whole time. And we're talking about a big dog, so, I mean, I'm imagining like a German shepherd or something, so they have space to run around.
And we don't want to prohibit anybody from owning an animal, but we don't want to burden the public with, the only way for me to own an animal is to spend $1,200 in a dog house, a fence, so, we're trying to balance that, and, you know, you can't legislate bad ownership, you know, of any animal, somebody, you know, doesn't care about an animal, I mean, you can't legislate that with, you can't with feeding and the watering and the shelter and the tethering or not tethering. And, but something, I think we're going to address this again in February, is it February?
You've not put it on the agenda, so, it can be on the February agenda, or you can have a work session.
Well, we, seems like I remember, the reason I'm thinking February, I was thinking that we talked about having to advertise again, or not advertise, for years.
I believe that our ordinance essentially, it would, it would tether, it has to have a swivel on it, and that swivel will allow the animal not to get tangled or whatever, so that's one of the things, that's the easiest, attractive option right now, have a swivel on it so that they don't get tangled up.
It's, that's a hard thing to enforce, I mean, I think it's a good option, but it's hard to enforce, and obviously, one of the dangers of chained dogs is they hang themselves, they get tangled up, like we saw that white dog, so, we also want to make law enforcement able to enforce ordinances, and it's not to punish anybody, because they don't have a lot of money, and the easiest option is, the only option that they see is to chain their dog, but we are asking for people to take responsibility, take some more responsibility for their companion animals, and chaining just, there are so many negative aspects to a chained dog. You know, they sit there basically, watch the world go by, many times we find them all the way in the backyard, these are not animals who are part of the family, and unfortunately, laws have to be created to protect them.
I do have one other question. You saw one of the dogs that was in such bad shape that the only option you recommended was euthanasia, and suppose your owner did not want to euthanize the dog, where do you leave it? Do you depress the issue, or you provide medical assistance, or what do you do if the owner says, no, I'm not going to put my dog down?
Treating heartworm is extremely expensive, and it's not, he was, he had, he was advanced, this dog was suffering very badly, he had a lot of fluid in his lungs, and the dog had been suffering for a long time, so, treating heartworm, it's not 100% guarantee that the dog is going to get better, and it's also very expensive, and most people don't have the funds to be able to do that, that's not something that we can really help with. So, after having a talk with the folks, with the owners, you know, they agreed that this was the best option for this dog, he was already suffering so badly when we found him.
Had he not, you ought to just walked away, I guess?
No, no, we wouldn't, I mean, the thing is, one of the laws says that they have to provide vet care for their animal, and so, if they refuse to provide vet care, then we would call the animal control at that point.
Can you get comments from all of you?
And I did realize, and I think we spoke about it the last time you were here, if I'm not mistaken, is that your construction of your dog house also includes an eyeball or something for tethering, in the event that there's no other options there?
Right, right, because we do serve many areas who don't have tethering ordinances, and so, what we try to do is we take away heavy chains, and we provide lightweight tie-outs, these 15-foot tie-outs that don't get tangled, and so, you know, those are quite expensive as well, but we exchange those, and so we hook them onto the dog houses, because, you know, we're realistic as well, we work in areas that, you know, where chaining is still allowed, so.
So, to kind of piggyback on what he said, so, if the, on some pictures we did see the dog tethered, but they have the safety things on each end, the.
The tie-out, uh-huh, right, yeah, most of the time we provide those to the owner.
Okay, certainly gives us a lot to thank and, certainly none of us want to see any animal abuse, and certainly we hope that owners at this particular town sees them with this level we are having, will take extra caution with their animals, seeing that they are sheltered, or in the garage, or in the home, or whatever, so that they will not be exposed to these extreme temperatures. And thank you for coming, and thank you for trying to be part of the solution, and that's what we want to be, is part of the solution, so that we don't see pictures like this again in Gates County.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next delegation is Ralph Howard from the First Charlie Gate, would you report?
Thank you all for having us here this morning. I'm going to actually turn it over to Ms. Angel White, she's actually pretty recently hired, that's why I believe in August, she took Mr. Brad Garner's position for operating the PCG landfill, the limit sites. The reason why we requested to speak to you all, mainly was we just kind of wanted to somewhat educate you on what we do on an everyday basis at the landfill, what goes on at the landfill, as well as convenience sites, we notice, we get questions all the time from different people about it, so, what I'm going to do is turn it over to Angel, and let her kind of go through the day-to-day process of what goes on there, and what we deal with, and if you have any questions after, just feel free to ask.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Angel White, the new PCG landfill manager, and so, I've given you a handout, or provided a handout for you, that just kind of gives you an overview of what I'm going to talk about here today. So, I wanted to kind of touch on employment for PCG landfill, I know that a lot of times we tend to think about what just goes on in our county, so I just wanted to kind of remind you that, you know, we do cover 14 convenience sites in the three counties, and that covers 62 employees, and that does fluctuate a little bit, but most of the time we have about 62 employees that work under me. And for Gates County, you guys have four convenience sites with 18 employees, that's 16 regular employees and two substitutes on a regular basis. We also contract with Republic Services to haul from our sites, and that brings an additional free truck drivers daily that we have to oversee and manage, and they haul all of our trash from our convenience sites to the landfill, and also back to the R2 County landfill. As far as an overview goes for our daily operations, lots of times as county commissioners, you might see people, and you might get approached and asked questions about what goes on at the site, so we kind of felt that it was important that you kind of have an overview of what goes on at the landfill on a daily basis, so that maybe you can field those questions a little bit better, or more knowledgeably. Not that you didn't do it, haven't done a good job fielding those questions, I didn't mean it that way. We do have what's called a closed landfill, so we don't actually put anything into the ground at our landfill, but we are still subject to state inspections. We do get inspected at least twice a year at our landfill. We operate what's called a transfer station, so we handle municipal, residential, and commercial waste that's brought in by individuals, as well as the waste that's brought in daily from our convenience sites, every Friday. What's brought in from our convenience sites is hauled by our drivers from Republic Services, and the PCG staff manages this daily to ensure that the sites have adequate space, so that whenever community members come to the sites, they can throw away and dispose of their waste. At the site, at the landfill, we also manage white goods, white goods are what most people refer to as metal goods. They're brought to our site, where we separate them and we sell them to buyers to try to ensure that we get the best price that we can for those. We also have to manage white goods that have CFCs differently than we manage white goods that don't have CFCs, so things with, like refrigerators and freezers have to be managed a little bit differently, and that's just to ensure that we're meeting all North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality regulation standards, so that when we face inspections, and I have to be reported at the end of the year, that we're meeting all requirements. We also receive tires from each of the counties, everybody's, all residents are allowed to, and commercial businesses are allowed to bring tires for free to the landfill. The cost of recycling and disposal of these tires is currently covered by our North Carolina Tire Tax. If the cost does exceed the tire tax revenues, then we can request a cost overrun grant, which we had to do for Gates County this quarter. Pesticides, we do participate in a pesticide containment recycling program, we've done this for several years. This program was started as an NCDAs grant, and there are continuing grants each spring that we can apply for to help pay for the costs of that program, things that we, you know, the disposable items that we need, such as the bags that we use for collection of pesticide containers in any form, I can bring those to the landfill for free to dispose of. We do bring yard waste to the landfill as well, that we manage right there on site, and the yard waste that's collected at our sites is brought to the landfill as well. What we do with it is we mulch it, we place it in the windrows, and then we allow it to go through several heat cycles in order to kill bacteria, any pathogenic bacteria. After it's gone through this process, it's safe to be used as a mulch, it can be moved off the site. We manage concrete and block, these items are ground up, and they can be used to fill areas much like we can use rock. We do manage liquid paint, it can't be left at the convenience sites, but any resident is allowed to bring it to the landfill for free. We. We accept that from all residents. Batteries are another items that can't be left at the sites, but anybody can bring them to the landfill for free as well. And electronics, electronics is a big thing right now because we do participate in electronics recycling. But it's gotten very costly to operate this program over the years. We have a trailer at 17 North Pointe Site. I forgot the change after this. We do have two trailers in Gates County. We have one at the Gate, no, we have one trailer in Gates County and one at the Gates Site in Gates. And that's, and we have one that stays at the landfill that anybody can draw all those items out. So far as hauling and disposal process and costs, Monday through Friday, Republic Services hauls waste from the convenience sites to the landfill for us. We determine where to send these drivers and what to haul back to the landfill and try to emphasize our routes to maximize the efficiency of hauling. At each site, we have the 30-yard containers and 40-yard compactor containers. It costs us the same amount of money to haul in both containers. So obviously, we try to emphasize to our site attendants to use those 40-yard compactor containers because we can more efficiently haul our waste using those. It costs less per ton to haul those. And what I've done for you on your handout is I've listed out the cost of hauling those containers for each of your sites, just so you can have an idea of how much it actually cost us to run these. And so you'll have another idea. The recycled compacters are different to haul than the regular trash compacters that cost on those. We haul about one recycled compactor per month from each site. The 40-yard waste containers, we haul once a week from each site, except for Sunbury and Gates. We haul those twice a week most of the times. And then the 30-yard containers, we will haul those several times a week from each site. So as you can see, it's pretty costly to haul the containers. Every time we pull one out and carry it back to the landfill, it costs us a pretty little penny. So we want to make sure that every time we pick one up, you know, that they're full. And that's another reason that, you know, one thing that's caused quite a stir since I've taken over is not allowing commercial people to dump at the sites. And, you know, we really want to make sure that, you know, if they are commercial and that they are supposed to be using the landfill site, that they are using the landfill site and not, you know, using our convenience sites. At the end of the day, we utilize a direct haul back to Bertie County Landfill. And this enables us to save more money. We give about a $21 per ton discount and we send waste back to Bertie County. So if we can send a compactor which weighs about 10 tons back to Bertie County, we can save about $200 in that one run. So that covers the cost of hauling that container. So that's one of the things that we've really tried to start implementing over the past couple months. Regular household waste will go to the Bertie County landfill. Recycling waste goes to Tidewater Fiber Corporation of Anchesville. And to talk about the legislation, I was going to let Ralph talk about that. He's a little bit more knowledgeable about this law and legislature. He's been in this a lot longer than I have.
There are several things that's going on. Used to, trash was like a kind of out-of-site, out-of-mind type deal. When it come up to Raleigh, things is kind of smooth, went smoothly every day. You never heard a lot about it. There's never any monies that were being touched by Raleigh. But a lot of that's changed and is changing. It's become a major issue that we've got to continuously monitor on a daily basis on the new house fields that are being introduced. One, Housefield 56, basically that was, would control the counties on having any type of flood control or any control over the trash, basically. And myself and Mr. Bobby Darn, who used to be county manager for the Clemmons, got together and there's only two authorities. And you all are part of the Abrahams Regional Solid Waste Management Authority, which consists of eight counties. And then Bobby has a three-county authority. So there's only two authorities in the state of North Carolina. And we actually got them to approve in the bill that this would affect all counties that sit for authorities, which basically took us out. So now we've got some other counties that are like, we may want to talk to you one day about joining the authorities just because it would help them out. Then we have Senate Bill 16, this refers to landfill life and site and has to do with how landfills are permitted. This is a Senate bill that's being looked at. It's nothing really, we're a closed landfill, but that landfill is being monitored on a, as Angel said, continuously. We have to pay a large amount of money a year for well water monitoring. So there's a lot of things that goes on with that. Housefield 257, the rest are if you committed to study how the solid waste tax is being used, this is money that we receive each year to help us with our operating budget. Housefield 576 has to do with the auralization of leachate. And this is actually still in the works. We've been fighting it because basically what this is, is like putting a big aerosol can, pumping the leachate fluid and then spraying it in the air. And it can travel for miles. And they were actually, there was a gentleman who invented this and he's really pushing hard to have it approved. And if it's approved, it could really be a horrendous smell in a lot of areas. And it can travel for miles. And they've actually done some research on it. It did not work, but again, he has actually gotten approved to one of them and it was voted against, but now it's been brought back up. So we're kind of fighting it also. Bertie County especially, they're really fighting it. That is part of our jurisdiction. Housefield 374 proposed cutting the current tire tax from a percentage to a flat rate depending on the size of the tire. And all this, again, is something that can affect us when it comes to disposing of tires. Another, something else that is not mentioned on here is e-waste that Angel spoke about, our electronics. That is a tremendous cost to the counties. At one time, it was a situation that we got funded money. Everything was paid for, taken care of, but not anymore. It's extremely, very costly. I forgot how much it is, like $400 or something, just to get rid of a little bit. It is very expensive. So we're trying to work with the states if there's anything we can come up on that as well. I think that's pretty much it. Is there any questions?
Mr. Howell, I know that some of us serve on the PGC board. We haven't had very regular meetings lately.
Right. And that's something that we can, you know, if you all want to have them every three months or every, however, it's fine, you know, with us.
I think we need to have one before we have come back to budget and all that.
And that wouldn't be a problem.
At least, at least a couple times a year, I would think that we would need to meet. Because the tent, we have had many.
Eight counties.
Eight counties. And I think there are concerns and when we went, we can discuss. I really do think that we need a regular schedule for that. When you said about paint, it has to be liquid paint. How about paint that's dried up, cans that are dried up?
They can dispose of that at the convenience sites. They can also, they can also dry or thicken or dry their liquid paint by adding cat litter or sand to it and dispose of it at the convenience sites as well. But a lot of people don't, you know, they don't want to have to go through that effort and, you know, it's fine to bring the liquid paint to the landfill.
Any questions?
Why did such a wide disparity on the recycled compactor, the different prices?
The travel. And they also are involved in taking it over to TSC as well with public. We have to, in other words, we don't have any capability hauling the Tidewater fiber.
I mean, like in the Rodeo, it's $185 and in Hobbsville, it's $330 for a per container. Pretty wide spread, you know, just one of those.
Right. Yeah, we'll have to, I'll be there and I'll look into that and see.
Another thing on here, the, I said gate rate is still $68 a ton for dumping compacted trash. But nowhere in here do you mention on recycle, we still get back $12 a ton?
For taking in 10 Tidewater fiber, which is, yes, sir, yeah, we do get back. Yes, it's calmed down some because the recycling prices have gone down so much. And now the gate rate too, just so, we have... The gate rate is actually 46, 1232, I believe, something. That's when you direct haul. But then if you take it to the transfer station and haul it from the transfer station over to Bertie, then that's where it's 68 something because we, there's a portion of that that's included in transportation from Bowman Truck and hauls it in their 18 wheeler over to the landfill. And then there is also included in that gate rate is a $2 tax that is required by the state for $2.75. Basically, this $2 of it is a tax that goes directly to the state for every ton. And then there is a 75 cent tax that has to cover engineering costs and things of that nature.
It would be, I don't know how you would do it, but it would be good if more of the public could realize that it costs us $68 a ton to haul it away or if they, if it's recyclable, we get $12 a ton cut.
Yeah, and I agree with you. And that's one reason why we just wanted to speak to you all today really, because a lot of times in the public's mind is when they take this piece of paper and they throw it in the trash, that's the end of it. In reality, that's where it just starts. And it's very costly. And the problem is that we're seeing is that it's getting more costly and it's getting, again, trashing to be becoming a bigger focal point in Raleigh. So there's a lot more deals being introduced, a lot, a lot of things that are being cut. Our white goods, fumes are being cut. They're looking at tire fumes, the e-waste, recycles that, the prices on those have dropped. And, you know, when I talk to, when you talk to the recycling people, scrap metal and different ones, a lot of things, the way they imply it to me is, and the man that owns TSC, the Benedetto family, he said, he's this way to describe that is when China gets a bad cold, the US gets the flu. Because when they start not using as much recycled materials and it affects us tremendously. Because that's where most of it is going overseas.
On that note, one of the biggest issues that I have at Sunbury as my district, there are many complaints that we've taken out that what we call a swap house.
Yes, sir, a swap shop.
Swap shop. And one of the things that's, they said that the building was in bad shape. That's one of the reasons we took it out. But also that there wasn't anything in there usually when you all came by. Well, what I'm hearing told is that when people bring it in, somebody comes and hits it. And...
The main reason for removing that was, was the shape of the building entirely. The, over half the floor was rotten. It had a very large hole in it and it was rotten up the side of the building. And the problem was replacing it was...
Well, that's my point. You know, if we spent the money to replace it, we're going to save on disposal fees. And a lot of those things, the people that are, if they put it in the swap shop, it's not going to go in, there'll be no trash getting to the site.
One thing that I would like to mention on the swap shop, they do have good intentions, but I will tell you this, there can be a liability issue when it comes to swap shops with the counties. And just giving you an example, what we've had in our counties is bedbugs. People bring things there that actually have bedbugs on them. Now, we've not been faced with a liability issue, but I'm going to tell you, there is a joint in county that I do ever see that was, and it got pretty nasty. Because some people bring books, pieces of furniture, and they do have bedbugs. And I know there are bedbugs in Gates County, but I ever see environmental health as well. And that is, to me, one of my biggest concerns as much as anything, just the liability part of the county.
Well, you know, if you're going to pick up something out of a swap house, I think that, you know, you would have to take the responsibility of making sure that, you know, there's nothing there that's going to be, you know, injured. Or, you know, certainly I'm thinking that the person who receives it has to tip on himself. But, you know, it's just been mentioned to me that it serves such a good purpose in Sunbury. I don't know about the other sites. If there's a grant out there or something available to get one of those swap houses back, even if it's a reasonable cost, I think it's, I think it would be a good thing if we can get it back, leaving it out of your hands. And you could say to me that if the floor was that bad, I would have fixed it myself, some of the people that use it. And so I think it served a good purpose. And if there are funds out there, get one back, I think would, I think in the end, we're going to probably save one because a lot of the things that were getting put there because we drove it in trash. And we got a big ton of disposal. That would be my thought.
I do like to bring up that, I don't know about all of our commissioners, I know some of us have gotten a lot of calls, numerous calls, about how some of the sites are causing some of our citizens to carry items somewhere else, such as chicken farmers with their cardboard. I'm sure you've probably got some calls about it. But I've been inundated with those calls and...
In order to come to kind of a resolution with poultry farmers, because poultry farmers are allowed to bring their cardboard to the landfill or...
To the landfill, I'm sorry.
Landfill for free. They can dispose of any amount there for free as kind of a compromise.
Something that I would have said, I have not heard from them recently, so I did not know. The other, Housefield 56, as I looked at that and compared some of the figures that Commissioner Felton was talking about too, I was kind of looking to see if our sites that were closer to Virginia, because we get a lot of complaints about folks coming from Virginia dumping their trash here. I'm sure y'all hear that too. Is that I didn't really see much of a difference between like Gates and the other areas. Do y'all, do you see any difference on the flow? And I wondered if Housefield 56, if that's what they're thinking about the flow of trash.
I don't really think, well, scars, not necessarily Virginia. The flow, there was another large company that really imposed, wanted to, as far as flow control, another trash company. They were looking at a Denver Avenue than like another state bringing in trash. But with Virginia's situation, that is something that we have been, we've been looking at for a long time with Gates County. And I know we talked about, I know the board members, we discussed Denver, and I think at our last meeting, we were talking about just looking at different ways of trying to control people from coming, from self-driving and all, bringing it to the Sunbury site and a few other sites.
And we can appreciate that because we've talked about, you know, your site employees trying to enforce them to that nature and if you get out of hand or whatever. But that's what I was wondering, did you really see, because I didn't see?
Not really. The way, when the waste ended, well, waste industry was the big factor of the flow control in Housefield 56, but they were not even focusing on, like I say, they were looking at it for their own interest on flow control, being able to take it to different places. But, I mean, that's something that we can, again, look at, do some research on is individuals coming out of Virginia. I know at one time we even discussed, I think stickers, I believe.
We think they're counted or something.
We even had site attendants keep records at one time when we come to Virginia.
And one other question that I had up, and I don't know if you want to answer it or not or if you're able to answer, like Housefield 276, I believe, was... uh, like House Bill two seventy-six, I believe it was, you mentioned an individual that had developed that, what, can you say where that individual was from?
He's from the, um, I think it was the Charlotte area, and I, I can't, I can't think of his name, but I will tell you this, um, I believe that one of, that his uncle was, is a son, and he has someone else's in the same. And it's really, it's become very political. I mean, I actually went up there, um, to, I've been there several times, I was up there for that particular situation because it got pretty, um, nasty.
And what does he claim to have been, this would be?
He claimed he's supposed to save, um, in the, save like the landfills, you have to pump out the leachate tanks, they'll just spray it in the air. But the problem is when it means, like I said, travel is piled to Verti County, they'd like to have it, yeah, over there.
It's just the odor, it's not that it does any harm to the air.
Just, I think that, well, from what they did some research, that it does drip, the, the car will drip, I forget how many miles, but then a portion do, but then it do. But he's not, he's not, he's still pushing, I mean, he almo, it almost got through, but then it was, it was burned out, but now it's been brought back in.
Well, yeah, it is, it's rockets drop on broccoli and food.
Well, exactly, and that was one of the things that they were, um, discussing.
And twenty years later, we find it's a Carson, Virginia.
So, um, I wanted to add one question here. Can you give us for the public, um, the physical address of the landfill?
Seven fifty-nine Perry's Bridge Road, W.
Could you repeat that?
Seven fifty-nine Perry's Bridge Road, and that's in W.
And hours of operation?
Eight to four, Monday through Friday.
I think we're answering the question too, and I did have, uh, there was a little suspicion about political or influence.
Thank you for coming, and, um, happy for trying to get a solution for our homeowners, our homeowners as well. Um, and look forward to that next week.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, if we'll turn to our administrative reports, does anybody get a shred or...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we'll take a ten-minute break, we'll come back at eleven o'clock, that's maybe eight minutes break. Okay, if you can get that, please. At noon at night, at, uh, seven to four administrative reports, and we'll start with the county manager.
And they are working on the courthouse room today, that's about all. This is for November eighteenth through December fourteenth. And it was the first thing under my report at the roof. Um, work has begun and is continued until at least the end of February. As far as the historic courthouse, and I know this is later on the agenda, last week with James Andreas in December, the demolition of the Western Kings would begin sometime in late January, he did not have days at that time. On November the twenty-ninth, the Gates County Leadership Opioid Forum Forum was held at the library. Twenty-five people attended and learned how opioids affect the lives of everyone as well as initiatives underway to assist with addiction, drug taking by his family. Thank you to the following speakers, final guests, Ashley Stute, Sheriff Hathaway, Phyllis Parker, Maria Spencer, Keisha Melton, Anne Molly, Captain Linda Parker, and Val Reddick. On December the seventh, I met with Councilor Matt with Jody Hawks and myself to bring Ms. Hawks up to date on the wastewater project. He then met with Timmy Hedges, Tiffany Finn, and myself to review the project plans and answer questions. We are still awaiting final EDA approval on project plans. On December the eighth, I attended a meeting that involved the Golden Leaf Foundation, the North Carolina Rural Center, and the William and Ida Friday Institute for Educational Innovation. They have partnered to develop the leadership capacity team for each county in Northeastern North Carolina prosperity goal. Each county is asked to identify three to four people to attend a regional meeting to be held in mid-January. The group would work then with eight to ten people in the county to help identify projects for their county to apply for Golden Leaf funding in late two thousand eighteen. The North Carolina Rural Center anticipates county groups to meet as needed between February and April to make recommendations. A few of the anticipated outcomes, and this information is from the Golden Leaf, are follows. Increased understanding of economic and social data and trends in the region. Increased knowledge of public and private resources and how to access them. Increased awareness of the region's assets and needs. Engage raw-based leadership teams that will continue to collaborate for the betterment of the region. And high-quality innovative regional proposals submitted to the Compassionate Building Grants Initiative. On December eleventh and twelfth, Kristy Byerman and I attended the comprehensive training for HR managers in Norfolk. Do you have any questions?
Yes. What is the EDA exam?
That's the Economic Development Administration, the state, I mean, excuse me, federal government. That's the one who awarded the nine hundred thousand dollar grant to us.
If we have any names of, of people you're gonna submit, uh...
I have to ask the people that participate, I have a few people, but I'm not going to ask them, so I feel like I should announce their names in this meeting and put them on the spot.
Yeah, I have to.
If you want to share it with me after the meeting this time.
Um, and also came in, could be one, three, or four.
Right.
And that is...
Okay.
Okay, um, and, um, we're high, so...
Well, that is on the agenda.
Okay, any other questions for the county manager? Okay, Charles, I guess I know who that is.
Oh, yes ma'am. Uh, yes ma'am, good morning. Yeah, we returned from the Christmas holiday as indicated by the collector's report, uh, Thursday, Friday, and did, uh, quite a bit actually, uh, cooking, you know, seven hundred pounds, I mean, for those two days and yesterday, uh, we want to thank the service, Representative Diane Hendricks, we, we were so involved, actually, and our bank, so, uh, thank you Diane. So, in any case, on the collector's report, any questions or observations from that? So, for the month, over one point eight, we'll be, we'll run though. Uh, that's all codes, by the way, fire, drainage, if you will, so that's, uh, all collections for the month.
What did I call, uh, like, attack that, what do you hear?
Um, I think it's, uh, here. Some what we build out, which would include public utilities, uh, six point, let's see. Six point three, uh, six million, three hundred ninety-one thousand, three oh eight, forty-two cent, actually. That includes your public utilities, uh, Commissioner Jordan. So, I will mention, we will have those prior year percentage totals, uh, on the January collector's report as we get a chance to, to really, we can see where we are, uh, as we get into, uh, budget time. We will be sending another round of the liquid reminder, uh, tax notices out the latter part of this month, or, or at least by the first week of February, well before we advertise it, that's our standard procedure, uh, to invite those people to, don't forget about us, and, uh, they will have interest in ours naturally, but we'll, we'll send those second mailings out.
Okay, how about, uh, listing abstracts, but I don't think we have a best or review of that, first of all?
That is correct, and, uh, our senior and elderly citizens, they do receive a listing abstract as well, uh, Chair Hoffler, on, uh, just as a identifying factor to make sure they sign some of that. They do get one for their real property. They are the only ones that do get one for real property, as we know, every, that, every other real property is listed automatically. But they, they were mailed yesterday, they should be, you know, receiving them anytime, they have the entire month of January come by, sign those, get those to us.
And are we going to have, we completed, uh, that conversion?
Uh, no ma'am, we, we, Parry Brown will be, uh, in-house, on-site, the latter part of this month, to begin the listing, uh, aspect, if you will. Uh, we've got barcode scanners ordered, uh, that is a barcode that will now appear on our listing abstracts. If there have been changes with that abstract, uh, we will simply scan, it'll list automatically, of course. Um, and even if there are changes, you can still scan it, that you've received it and begin to, you know, intervote or the single I or A to B, whatever you need to. He will be on board latter part of this month, that's just for listing. The other component is the land records portal, uh, that will be configured, uh, from BITEC, well, from Keystone, I'll say, to BITEC in February. That will be the final pull of data, if you will, from Keystone. Uh, so we're still cutting that transition training move, configuring all the data, yes ma'am.
And across training out and people to...
We are, uh, learning collection, learning, uh, how to do rollback, I mean, how to, you know, pre-paints everything, every possible aspect with this new system. Uh, getting a schedule of, of, uh, standing operating procedure manual. BITEC has a good user's manual that, that is in place for that, you know, yes ma'am.
Um, any questions, additional questions? Okay, um, I believe we have a request for a refund?
Uh, yes ma'am, we do, we have a refund.
Okay, and I'll take more if it's you.
Yes ma'am, uh, the plates were eventually turned in, uh, the amount, return request, one twenty-seven, uh, eighty-four cent.
I'm sure enough, uh, look the refund over and get the re-documentation again, and make a motion that we approve the refund.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the question, by the way.
Question's been made, second to, to refund to, to pay our one hundred twenty-seven dollars, eighty-four cent. Any additional questions? Karen Dunn, all those papers, say aye?
Aye.
So, this is, now, I know it's been a busy time, uh, well, through the sixth, I guess it's a busy time.
Oh, we get some deep Friday, uh, with this Virginia weather, we will make accommodations, certainly. If that comes to pass with, uh, any ice or, or snow, people not getting to see us, we'll, we'll progress that, of course, yes ma'am. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, additional administrative reports. I do want to, uh, commend, uh, our emergency management that was called down to Ozlo County, and we had a lot of appreciation from the Ozlo County, uh, emergency management, with help that Billy Win and Wash did, and, I believe, was a child that was here, uh, they went down and coordinated with them, and we received a very nice lot of appreciation, and certainly we think we have top-notch people, and it's nice that they are recognized. So, wanted to make sure of the, in the record.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, on our expenditure, we should say, uh, days, eight or nine of...
Eight, nine.
Nine of fifty-four on expenditures.
Okay.
Nine of six more, right?
And question?
Yeah, under the building ground, we budgeted eighty thousand dollars for insurance. So we've spent a hundred fifty-four thousand. We have a hundred and ninety-three percent overrun, what caused, what caused that?
Car wrecks, accidents that happened over the past year.
But that's in general, but, um...
No, it's all listed under the building ground.
Okay, gotcha.
But because of the number of car wrecks that we had over the past year, different insurance things we had over the past year, that's what attributed to today's increased cost. Now, we did receive a little bit of, and we have to pay them upfront. Some of this also is with the workers' comp, they come in, they review items after we pay it, and we did receive a little bit of money back into this line.
So even though, uh, so many accidents were, whatever, operated related, building ground?
That's, that's insurance for the entire county. And what we are gonna do, uh, based on information that we've received, Krista finally has to see all of the paperwork that we requested, we're gonna take this line and divide it and put it into each of the departments, so each department will see how much the county pays for insurance for their department and their employees. And since she's just received that, that will be, well, it will not be reflected on reports you receive probably until March.
So, if you're a department that doesn't have a vehicle in your department, you won't get a percentage?
No, you'll still have a percentage because that also includes workers' comp.
It'll be, this figure will be divided upon the various departments?
Depending on how the insurance is, we receive it from the NCACC.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying, if, if I was a department that didn't have a vehicle, and you were telling me that this is higher because of accidents with vehicles, I would...
Right, well, if you don't have, if you don't have a vehicle, then your department will not receive any insurance that's related to vehicles in your department alone.
So, in the, in the, is it possible that, uh, that some of that increase in your, would pay maybe a deductible or something? So it could be, so it's not all premium, it could be premium and annual deductible.
It's a broad difference.
All right.
Glad to be nice to see the break. Okay, any additional questions about administrative reports that we had in and written for? Okay, um, just to remind people, we can have a meeting in, the second meeting in January, it's gonna be on Wednesday, seventeenth, because of holiday, Martin Luther King on the fifteenth. So, Martin, for calendars, also, we have a workshop session that is gonna be at six, five o'clock. So, the commissioner's meeting is at seven, the workshop is at five.
And that was on code enforcement?
Okay. Um, now we're dying to nail comments. Uh, we're dying to run number six, the first one is a proposed zoning ordinance text amendment. Uh, we, Lisa, we've got to light the chairs, chair. It's about planners, want to do that, at this time, though, we need to set her explain for the public here.
You're not have, well...
It's a proposed. We're not having a public hearing, right?
No.
Okay, this is a proposed?
Yeah, well, it is a public hearing, but you can have her explain, what I was going to say was, the notice that was in your electronic copy, if you had the key there, was not the correct. There was an adoption of comprehensive plan that was accidentally stuck in there.
That's, yeah.
Right, so that is not the correct one. Public hearing for the zoning and subdivision ordinance. That is the public hearing. And Ms. Sherry did provide some additional handouts for you this morning.
Scratch these?
Of course, yes, because that was accidentally...
If this is the one that passed out, go by that correctly, yes, and highlighting some things so it'll be easy to see. All right, um, the first proposed amendment and the planning board has sent for this public hearing is the Technical Review Committee, which, basically, this is, I guess, shoring up the zoning and subdivision regulations there, so everything would be consistent and getting some of the office names, um, I think, more in line. And the first change we have on section twelve dot O two Technical Review Committee, which is the zoning ordinance. Um, number two, we have the changes there, removal of Planning and Development Services to Planning Department. And our next change would be instead of the prior marshal's office, the emergency management. the emergency management, the sheriff's department would be now the sheriff's office. And our firemen's association has been added, and the area utility providers, of course, will be the same. The next one, our subdivision ordinance, it's section four zero two dot three in the plat review, and that's defining the TRC as follows. So again, shoring up that with, and making it consistent with the zoning. Number four is our one change from emergency management. Then number ten, emergency management services must review the plat to determine if services are available, which is an addition. And then the addition of number eleven, utility providers must review the plat to determine if their respective utility is available and any impacts to the utility system. So, that's the only one we have for the technical review committee.
Okay, and those are just basically, uh, clear enough names?
Yes.
Correct names, and is that ten and eleven?
This was discussed when I was acting planner, and the TRC was defined differently in the subdivision ordinance and in the zoning ordinance. So this makes the same list of people be in the subdivision ordinance and zoning ordinance.
All right, now I want to, the session law for two thousand seventeen is what has prompted these changes or additions, and this amends the Gates County zoning and subdivision ordinances as well. And I tried, I listed them together to kind of keep the topic together, um, instead of zoning and subdivision, that's okay, easy to follow. And our first one is section two zero one, which is the exemptions, which will be in the Gates County subdivision ordinance. And section four dot O two eighty-nine and five, word and term definitions in the Gates County zoning ordinance. This first one is an exclusion or exemption, whichever other people would get it the same. And we actually had this in our subdivision zoning ordinances already, uh, but basically, the new statutory language that just codifies the case law into statute, but it's something we already followed. And I'll, I'll read the new, and they added a little few words that we have to go by. And it's the ex-state exclusion, "The division of land among heirs in order to settle an estate by a probated will or by order of a court of jurisdiction in the settlement of a decedent's estate or in accordance with interstate succession under chapter twenty-nine of the general statutes. Note, unless such lots meet the standard of this ordinance, a building permit shall not be issued. A copy of the will or order shall be submitted to the administrator." And again, that was per session law two thousand seven dash ten, Senate Bill one thirty-one, and a new exemption subdivision stated to account for the division tracks in accordance with the probated will or in accordance with the interstate succession as detailed in the North Carolina general statutes. And again, it was already there, it just, little language to bring in line with law, the statutory law. All right, any questions? Okay. Section six oh four B of the Gates County subdivision ordinance, this is the subdivision ordinance only, and this year's session law, again, they did some changes to, which would be certificate of survey and accuracy. And what they did here is they added a few, I guess, a choice, basically. Um, instead of the ratio, they will have the ratio of precision or positional accuracy that can be calculated and provided in the surveyor's statement. And they added, instead of the registration number, they have, basically, just want license numbers. And professional land added to surveyor in front of that, of course, and license number again, which has to be stated. And it's just been updated to meet current statutory requirements, again, per session law two thousand seventeen dash twenty-seven, House Bill four fifty-four. All right, next one is another certificate, section six zero four D, Gates County subdivision ordinance, certificate to subdivision classification page. And the first change or addition to that is, I'll read the whole thing. "This survey is an existing parcel or parcels of land of one or more existing easements, and does not create a new road or change an existing street. For the purpose of this section, an existing parcel or existing easement is an area of land described in a single legal description or legally recorded subdivision that has been or may be legally conveyed to a new owner by deed in its existing configuration." Number two...
Oh, excuse me.
Yes.
There's two streets in there, on that one sentence, um, I, well, I guess that's a typo.
It is a typo.
Yeah, yeah, well, they, and they struck through, that was odd, the odd thing, they would strike through and bring it back in the session law pages, so, yes. And I've just brought it over as they can read them, so yes, that is, it's like, well, I see it as too. All right. Number two, "This survey is an existing feature such as a building or other structure or natural feature such as a water course." Number three is new, "This survey is a controlled survey. For the purposes of this section, a controlled survey is a survey that provides horizontal or vertical position data for support or control of other surveys or firm mapping. A controlled survey by itself cannot be used to define or convey rights of ownership." Number four, "That the survey is a proposed easement for a public utility as defined in G S sixty-two dash three." And indeed, they added the exemption or to that sentence. And then, again, they signed, they want the seal from the surveyor. And then they didn't kind of keep that consistent with themselves either, but we can substantially meet these, but they didn't, again, instead of license number and all that, yeah.
They did, because we have four, the land surveyor.
Yes ma'am.
Professional land surveyor.
Yes.
And they have more license numbers.
But we can make that, I mean, I can add that, substantially is the key, that we try to be as close to, so I can do that to keep it consistent. And it's been updated to meet the current statutory requirements in this form, and this is the minimum. All right, on to the, our new exemption. And I provided, um, you all too, with the school of government's opinion on that, just for your reading later, and it kind of explains, I think, in a little more detail, and I would say it's their opinion, but I think there's also, not an opinion right now on that, on the school of government, just some support.
Please, please, before we go on, back up there to, to, that D.
Yes.
Is it the same thing, I know, the fight over, and then we got exception twice?
Well, it's exemption or exception, they had, they added to that. They added exemption or and to the exception.
Okay.
Yes. I know, it seems so wordy, but, yeah, we can...
Remember, these are lawyers doing this. Um, and, um, why don't we talk about D to pull this up last year?
Sure, that's fine.
We have, yeah, we have to go to the public hearing on this, so do I entertain a budget for a public hearing?
The blue barter will be in the public hearing.
Well, it can be considered, but, either way, you have to have a public hearing.
And that's a new exemption, all that is new.
Uh, Jim, I make a motion that we go into, uh, a public hearing on the document pertaining to zoning and subdivision ordinance.
Do I have a question?
And affecting the TRC members review.
I have some.
It's more than TRC?
Right.
Yeah, it's...
It's a public hearing for all of these budgets amendments.
Flat review, TRC.
It's a public hearing for zoning and subdivision ordinance updates, takes amendments.
Just cutting off my...
Thank you, Jim. I'll make a motion that, uh, we go into public hearing on the county's zoning and subdivision ordinance, by force, I'll put a paper in that paper. It'll be down. I'll second that.
Question that made in private, second, any discussion? Here are none, all those who paid, would say aye?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, going to public hearing for zoning and subdivision ordinances, and also, um, Mr. Felton, Commissioner Felton, do you have any comments? You have the survey all, um...
As Lisa said, it's kind of wordy, they say the same, that thing, risk more time, but it's, it's okay.
I mean, sorry, I talked about vertical cars, I don't know why.
Well, it is, what we have here today is a little bit different than what had been produced before, and it, the one that had been produced before really made no sense at all, when it said positional act, where a regular precision positional action calculated seven to five hundred. That was just nonsense. And now, it's, on the one today, it's left blank, and that, that is fine.
I can outline that too, because I didn't know what that...
It meant nothing, it meant nothing, exactly. And that's where I went in and had a little more explanation, because what I saw, I wanted to make sure, it's a choice that they could use either or now, and they took the ratio out of that completely. So, it's a choice to use that.
Go to that, uh, what she had copied, it was exactly what they sent her. Note for note, even the duplication of words, such things as that. But there's also, and in a directive in there, that what we produce is substantially like this, it does not have to be wordy or wordy. So, what, before we have...
Yes, that's true.
So, that means a change to land survey or in line?
Yes, no, it came off. This is the least we can do, and again, the planning board, I did review these, by the way, I had mentioned it, and this was sent from them for your public hearing today, I wanted to let you know that as well, they looked at this too. Uh, but yes, anything that you wanted to modify, this is the least of them, we provide these words in that some format, and if it's the same, we can add.
And I do think that if we use professional land survey or license number, we should do that, but on that second one.
Okay.
That way it'll be consistent, you know, as well.
That is the designation that a few years ago was registered by a surveyor, and asked for professional land. So that would include the last one.
Okay, um, any further comments? Or the new exemption?
Yes.
Okay, any comments from the public?
I ask that you speak into the mic, you can't hear.
Okay, I'm sorry. Move your, please move your mics closer, it's very difficult hearing in the back, and they're not picking you up on audio as well. Okay.
It was up to you, but it's hard to, okay, noise, there we go.
All right. Okay, is it any comments from the public or questions from the public? Okay, I think from the, um, oh, excuse me, um, going to the new exemption.
Yes ma'am.
If you will talk to us a few minutes about that.
Yes, and again, I provided their opinion, again, it may not be, they don't know yet either exactly how this will affect the counties or municipalities, we'll see. Um, but the new exemption is, it's an expedited review is something I'll get on here, and that we have put that in here according to their language. "The administrator shall render a decision within five working days after receipt of the completed plat for the division of a tract or parcel of land in single ownership if all of the following criteria are met: A, the tract or parcel to be divided is not exempted under section two zero one B, which is the ten acres, they can't do both. B, no part of the tract or parcel to be divided has been divided under this subsection in the ten years prior to division. C, the entire area of the tract or parcel to be divided is greater than five acres. D, after division, no more than three lots result from the division. And E, all resulting lots comply with all of the following: any zoning, lot dimension size requirements, the use of the lots is in harmony with the applicable zoning requirements, and there is a permanent means of egress, ingress and egress recorded for each lot." So, that is the new exemption, and the school of government defined, defined this as a minor subdivision in their language, but again, I don't know that that is exactly right, but I'm just, if y'all read the opinion, just so you know, that's what they did define that as. Any questions?
My only problem with that is that D, after division, no more than three lots result from this division. Of course, two lots is a minor here, anything over two lots of nature. But I think that can be mitigated by adding the words, including the remainder lot. Just going, if you had five acres of that there, and you cut out two one acre lots, you got three acres left over. And that remainder, that three acres would be the third parcel.
Okay.
We dealt with that in the past.
Okay.
Dealt with that, yeah, being an issue in the past.
Yes.
Now, remainder could be seventy-eight acres.
Yes, it can be.
Could not be over three parcels. So, if I understand, Commissioner Felton, what you're saying is, you believe, and I, and I agree, this is what you're saying, that, you know, in, in the past, for clarification, the, when you cut out two lots, some people have said, "Well, I've got two parcels," but they really have three. So, we need that wording in, in here.
Okay.
To, Billy, you want to state what you think it should be? What I would say, after division, no more than three lots result from the division, including the remainder lot, or remainder parcel. I guess if you've got six acres, you can really only divide it, two parcels, two building lots, and whatever's left over would be the third parcel. Which would make it a major subdivision.
Well, for this exemption, they have to meet every one of this, of these criteria that's listed there.
Yeah, I know they need to be every one, but the one we're specifically talking about needs to be worded properly, right?
Right, well, true. And I, and this is what I was afraid of, the confusion between minor and major. And, and we did discuss it in the planning board, there was no action taken that day, but that is exactly what I felt that we might run into, and the citizens would, you know, see that this is major, why did I have to do this, and then not do that, or whatever. So, we did think about that, and, and there's two ways we can go with it, as it's written with some modifications, but they would have to meet each and every one of this criteria in order to even claim this exemption. And it can still be as the school of government said, which I, again, I know it's confusing, and you haven't had a chance to read it possibly yet, but that they are saying this would create a new minor subdivision class. So, I'm reading as if we, if we don't change the lots that a major would be triggered, you know, such as four, I've seen it in one other county, it's only one I've seen that's even written into their ordinances as of yet. Their lots were four were a major subdivision, as it hit the four, and three were minor. So, this fit in with their ordinance as well, with no confusion. And they had a lot of discussion about it even before they did that too, even though it wasn't confusing, because it's a lot to take in when you're subdividing your land and have to meet all these, because, because it has to be noted and researched within five working days. So, yeah, that...
Well, another, you know, to this area has to be very, very clear, because if someone comes to one of our departments and asks the question, they're going to assume what they're hearing is correct, and they're going to go to an attorney and a surveyor, and they want to, the vibe is probably up, and then they come before somebody, and they realize they've done all this work and done it, and all that, all this expense, and the I was and the T was crossed, and that's what we need to be very, very clear.
Agreed.
I knew you would.
Yes, I totally agree.
You would agree.
And it would certainly, I would, any, anything you would like to add, or you feel it would make it clear with any of our citizens, that would be kind of open to that, because I do want to make it right the first time.
Well, of course, we can go more specific than this, they stayed there, we just can't go less.
Yes.
It, that could also be reworded to say no more than two building lots with the third parcel, or the remainder lot not to be used for building purposes.
Can I just make a point of, since there was no public comments, we can come out of public hearing and have this discussion between the, our group, you know, I have a motion to exit the public hearing.
So, what?
Send a second, okay, meeting discussion then. Okay, all those that they were exiting the public hearing, okay, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, well, I'm public here, but we still have you, Ms. Sherry up here.
Yes, that's fine, that's fine.
And we are trying to figure out, so there is not confusion. This minor subdivision definition, the new exemption, so my court is codified by State law.
Yes, ma'am.
So they're all across North Carolina, but we need to make sure, as Mr. Boyd said, that there's no confusion, and Commissioner Felton, concernedly, I said, what? The intent... Interpretation. Intent and interpretation sometimes are different.
Because I think you could go home with this UNC document, which we haven't read yet, and come back and then give us a test, and we might, if it's more of a choice, answers up there, we might have different answers. What we're trying to avoid is that, and Billy's... The issue is the surveyor. It's very clear to him, and the top of surveyor in the plan of war, very clear to her.
Agreed.
So that could be a three-time...
I had to go, I talked to Mrs. Cherry, let's do that, and ask questions. So, and I did read that she emailed this the last last night. But I do agree that we need to make sure it is crystal, as clear as we can.
Yeah, you know what? I think... I'm sorry. Thank you. You know, I think it would be a good practice, almost per meeting and stuff like that, if there was a document that we handed out or stamped bottom of the document, we recommend that you seek counsel on this type of transaction, for real. You know, I think it'd be very important, something for us to consider, if you wanted to, Ms. Cherry, you can make a note of that.
Yes.
Think about that. I know, you know, with taxes and things like that, you know, a lot of times you'll seek counsel before making a decision, that kind of thing. So give us a layer of oversight, some more eyes to see it. An attorney does land transactions and things of that nature more frequently than we do. And so I think it would be advantageous to the constituent as well as to the board.
Agreed. And certainly, again, I'm open to any interpretation, if you want the opportunity to, you know, sit down and take some of this in too, because it is, it's still a gray area. This is copied exactly as they have written it from the room from the session hall. And they're confused too, so I agree, we need to get it right. We need to make sure it's correct, and we don't stray too far from what their intent is as well, because I still have some questions too of them. I mean, it's new, and people are struggling with it. It's not just us, so... But we will get it right. Appreciate you being open to that.
I was just going to flash back to my notes.
Just the last paragraph in the school of government's opinion kind of... Just real quick, if you do have just a moment, I think I highlighted it? Yeah, there you go, on the last page. Just the last sentence, I guess, on page four of the UNC's opinion. Just the last sentence to itself kind of...
I don't think it's not highlighted in our...
On the last page?
No, it's that right above the blue.
Conclusion?
It's the conclusion.
That's right, yes, ma'am. That's from the lawyers.
Well, I was reading on the previous page, number four. The subdivision must result in no more than three lots. This is a calculation of the total lots from the subdivision. If Mrs. Smith owns eight acres, she may carve out by two one acre lots along the road, two home sites plus one lot, with the remaining six acres and qualify for this speed of review. If Mrs. Smith carves off three home sites and keeps a five acre lot, the subdivision will not result, will not result, will not qualify.
Right. That's the only out I see are meeting those, every one of the criteria listed in that exemption, as far as the review and even the approval of... You know, I know it would still be confusing to people. I mean, it's, again, confusing to the professionals, and... But we'll have to explain it. That's why we're here, so we're helping through that too.
Please, if we take that same statement and say, "After division, no more than three parcels, preface, two building lots and remainder lot not to be used for building purposes, result from this division."
But that, when you put that, I'm not saying strike it, but just for another clarification, when you say not the building lots... Not the building lots, is that the present? 10 years from now? 20 years from now?
Up there earlier, it says you can't do anything over 10, in 10 years. Once you use, once you use this, you can't use it again for 10 years.
Okay, once you use this exemption.
Well, that's prior to the division. These...
That's talking about being divided. That's references being divided, but there's not saying anything about being built upon.
Well, yeah, it can be cut out when over 10 years. So it can't have two miles in the same parcel, but it can be...
But it could be interpreted then, if you say not be built upon, even if I never intended to divide that property, then it could never be built upon. That's the way it could be interpreted.
For 10 years.
Yeah, because it's all, again, it's all pieces of the... A through.
Okay. I think this part of it needs more study. I think we need to consult our attorney and to think about that, how we want to phrase. But my question is, if someone comes in tomorrow with something that means that she'll have to follow this guideline, just to make you aware.
So the effect of date is?
It's already in effect.
Okay.
It was July...
It was not... Okay. If someone comes in tomorrow, walks this, the... It hasn't been all acre either.
Yes.
And as per our current law of ordinance states, a minor subdivision is two. If it goes to three, it's a major, correct?
Well, it would be without this written. This will keep it, the school of government defined it a new as minor, and because they have to meet all the criteria and of land in single ownership, again, another qualifier, that we can, we wouldn't, it would not trigger the major, and just because, you wouldn't be able to do it within five days. So the only way you can get an expedited review is to meet all of this statement and the criteria.
Within five days.
Within five days. I could, I only hope I can get the technical review committee to, if they were in it in five days. So, yeah, that would be things that would be exempt under this, just verifying, you know, with our office that all of this criteria was met. I think that's the biggest thing for us. I have to verify that all this was met and reviewed, sign off. And it's a final plan, it's always required for this too, because of that expedited review.
So, Madam, what should we do going forward after today? Should we revisit this?
That, I mean, that's up to you. She had told me the plan of war did not want to leave this as it was. They did not want to change the major and minor subdivisions for Gaze County. But either way, this has been approved by the state, and this is the law of the land that she has qualified as written. All the other, the only thing that came from the plan of war that actually did not come from the state is the TRC. So you can vote on each thing individually, but the way this is written is already law in North Carolina. And then you can always revisit it if you want to make changes, or believe as is, but what we discussed, the thought was bring it before you to make you aware that this is the new law, this is what has to be put into our ordinance, and that there will be questions coming from people saying, "Well, I've got five acres, but I had to do X, Y, and Z." This person's got five acres, but they didn't have to do it, and we'll have to be able to explain this new law to them. So you might get questions about why is one person being treated differently than the other?
Well, it certainly won't affect every transaction. That comes before the plan of war or whatever, but it could, it could come up.
Also, this is a transfer of land from an estate.
No, a single ownership.
Single, yes. That's all parts where the estate...
Yes, exactly.
Madam Chairman, what do we do?
I say we vote on each section separately.
Are we prepared to vote?
Do I have, why don't we do that, and then we'll have a little bit more time to think about what we want to do about that last one?
Why don't we do that? What do you say?
To vote on section 12.02. Do I have a motion that we... Okay. Do I, I'll entertain a motion for section 12.02 and section 402.3 dealing with the TRC. And that is just clarification of department names, basically.
Madam Chairman, I would make that motion that we approve section 12.02, which we committed with the changes made in number, subsection number two, and section 402.3 to placate here with the changes made of number four, emergency management.
And addition.
And number seven.
Okay, a motion's been made in topic second that we consider section 12.02 and sections 402.3, the TRC changes. In discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Okay, now I'm going to move on, have this approved, this chair.
Yes, thank you.
That we need to amend the sections laws for 2017, and the first one is section 4-dash, no, section 402-895. Okay, and section 201 and section E in subdivision.
That's the estate, yes, exclusion.
Yes, that's the state exclusion. Do I have a motion concerning those two items? Section 201 and section 402-895.
Madam Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Then I will second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made and promptly second, in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, that's 5-0. We don't need to say anything else about that. Okay, we go to sections 604D, Gaze County subdivision ordinance. Certainly, we need to strike out the strict redundancy there. And I would like to add, professional land surveyor, where that has to be signed so that the title would be consistent, and the license number that was required on something else. Do I entertain a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve that with the changes made.
Second?
Okay, a motion's been made, is second, in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, that's... Okay, I'm sorry about that. Okay, going back, I apologize, I was thinking we did that one. 604B, Gaze County subdivision ordinance.
I make a motion that we approve section 604B, Gaze County subdivision ordinance.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman.
In discussion.
Madam Chairman, I ask for discussion because Commissioner Felton made a comment on positional accuracy, and he agrees with the way it's worded now. I have no other questions.
Okay, are we prepared to vote? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Once again, votes 5-0. Okay, now we come to the new exemptions discussed, current minor subdivision definition. Ms. Cherry, what is your professional opinion?
I feel that it should certainly be researched a little more, and if we could ask some more questions, if that would please the board too, if there's any additional questions that are answered by the school of government, or even, like you said, our county attorney. But my professional opinion for now, just like Madam said, is we have to follow this, and they have to meet each and every, again, one of the criteria, and we have to verify that within five working days.
And if we, if we just, if we don't change anything, I mean, it's still the law, so you can have the law.
Yes, ma'am.
But certainly, personally, I would rather study it, get some opinions before we make changes. Sometimes if we do something in a rush, we don't think it through. I mean, we can go ahead and follow the state law, but we will have time to do a little bit of research. That's my personal opinion.
But the comment was made earlier that as long as we stay within some range of version of this and we don't get too far off, does that apply to this?
As long as this, this is the minimum that we can do. If you add any more language, again, it has to be approved by the attorney. I would send it to the school of government, and hopefully they would answer from that disoffice.
The thing that jumps out at me, because you mentioned it at least twice, is the five working days.
Yes.
I wonder if there could be variation from that.
It can be. That's a may. That was a may. A may was included with that at first, and you'll see that in that school of government, that they may provide an expedited review. But it's session law, and again, it's so much in that information I gave you from the school of government, and they explained the may and the shall about this. So why I went the safe way was, we will do an expedited review, because that's the only thing we've gotten a professional opinion on that will be the correct one.
Well, I understand that our department is small, we don't have a lot of personnel, you know, to do something in five days is very, could be very difficult, in five working days.
Yes, and if it's a lot of questions about that particular parcel, possibly, or these parcels.
Yes, I would understand that if we could tweak that more...
Again, once y'all get the chance to read the appendant from UNC, I think that'll help, or I... or I don't think it could make it, even though we really, because I've gone back and forth. And I have emailed the author of that post that you have the information on. They didn't answer. So, I mean, I'll go further with our attorney and I mean, that's probably the right thing to do as well, to protect us all.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to unofficially poll the board maybe, just if they would like to table this, like this part. That sounds like a good idea, to February.
Well, we have another meeting in January, 17.
I don't have a problem with that. Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Can we take that, worry to continue it?
Yeah, thank you for that. Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on this last section, on the new exemption, that we continue this discussion at a later date. And I'll ask for your decision on the date, January or February.
Do you think we could get any additional information from the school of government?
I would certainly call and email. I would think they would answer if they could, but it's just such a gray area and still at this point, I don't know if there'll be any required answers that will be, but yes, I feel like I can get some more information.
And we can consult with our attorney?
Yes.
And maybe have a, and hopefully maybe by the next meeting, which is January, 17.
That'd be fine.
We can update.
Yes, I'll get more, as much information as possible.
Do we need a motion to just continue?
Continue. He just made that.
Is that a motion or a...
A motion, I mean, a continuance has been proposed. Do I have a second?
I'll second a motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion has been made to continue this discussion until our next meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you.
Okay, old business. I tell you what, Jack loves to take my paper. Okay, court house. I provided another report with January timeline and I spoke with Miss Kenny Walker, who's president of the Historical Society. She has not officially reported back from the entire group, but she felt like the Historical Society would be willing to submit grant applications if needed on the House of Gates County Board House. And I split to Miss Walker like so and they're meeting today. So we should have some information. Some of these grants, like the Covington and all, has been nonprofit and they would be willing to that be the nonprofit and, because they would like to see that done. Okay, going on to new business and I see our favorite, so it gets director here who had a lot of information for us, drug and alcohol testing policy.
Madam Chairman, this paperwork is a drug. When you read it, you go to sleep.
It keeps the companies in business.
Yes. In fact, in January the first, we had some different changes to the drug and alcohol policy as required by the Office of Drug and Alcohol Policy and Compliance. The change in this policy is that before we tested for five different drug groups, which was marijuana, cocaine, amphetamines, opiates, and PCC, they are changing opiates to opioid and they have, are adding testing for four new synesthetics opioids, which is hydrocodone, hydromophone, oxycodin, and oxyphon. And these things are, they said that we would recognize them as oxycodin, trecet, vicodin, loetab, norco, et cetera. And also, in addition to the five groups, we used to test for ecstasy and meth and amphetamines. They are putting them as different, separate groups. They are changing the definition for the EBT, which is what they use to test for alcohol. They also changed the definition of the alcohol screening devices and they added new ones that the FTA, the FTA drug test providers can use. They also changed the definition of substance abuse professionals. And one of the major changes was that MRO officers, the way we do drug tests now, we no longer ask people what medical, what drugs they take. So if the test comes back that it's positive test, then a medical review officer will contact the person who has been tested positive. And they'll then ask them if they took anything, any, they had prescriptions for any drugs that could make them test positive for one of those five groups. And in the past, once they told them what it was and they verified, they turned the prescription, then it was sent to us as a negative test result. Now, it'll also still be sent to us as a negative test result, but they will contact them and they will have them to have their pharmacist or their doctor to send them something in writing about the prescriptions stating that they can't take another drug, if they can't change to a different drug, that they would ask them to give them, to give them a different prescription so that they wouldn't test positive. And if not, they would then have them contact us back and we would have to then take them out of, they cannot drive for us because they would still be testing under import, which I think is pretty, is a pretty good thing, but even if it's a legal drug, it still can have those same effects. But those are the major changes that they require us to make.
Okay, well, thank you for the update and for the reading that we had to do. I will entertain a motion to approve the new drug and alcohol testing policy for Gates.
So move, Madam Chairman. Second.
Motion's been made in time of the second and for our discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you.
Thank you.
A resolution removing Edgar Mitchell as review officer. And as, looking through this, people are review officer, we don't need a word definitely review officer, anybody, do we?
And she would be the first person, point of contact.
I know, but aren't you a review officer? You're a review officer. I mean, I mean, there is a chronology, I mean, ranking, but that's, is that an official title or is it, I mean, you're reporting somebody as a review officer?
We can take that out.
Is Renee McGinnis still a review officer? And we have taken her off.
Someone's mentioned.
Will that be on the resolution?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
And this would be, if I may, this would be the most up-to-date one and this would be the only thing we could review.
Okay, so that would be Ms. Cherry and you. Okay, do I hear a motion to remove Edgar Mitchell as review officer?
Remove.
Hear a second?
Second, a motion, Madam Chairman.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
I should have said in discussion, it's something we need to just pay attention to, like Edgar has been appointed at least twice. So, once you're appointed, you're appointed. And as Linda said, you often, no, it's not definite. But each time we got a new plan, we got reappointed and that was not necessary. Just something we need to pay attention to, Madam Chairman, so we can.
Yeah, it doesn't, our aim was that we get a new plan or whatever. Okay, so currently, we've just voted. Anybody in opposition? So the vote is five to zero. Currently now, we have two review officers, Lisa Cherry and Natalie Rangford.
Well, the way this is, it says, does make, it says, and naming replacements, but Kathy Lane is listed as a review officer and another resolution is wait. So she's still a review officer.
So we have three review officers.
Kathy Lane.
Okay, so we have Lisa Cherry, Natalie, and Kathy. And I'm sure that Natalie and Kathy, hopefully, it never happened. Okay, EIC Community Service Block Grant Program.
This is the application that they used to submit each year in paper format. This year, they submit electronically and we did take the one to print it for your new books. They just need you to review it and go, only if you accept this or not.
Hey, I'm just looking and I see the sign-in sheet for the public hearing in each county by third.
I cannot answer any questions. I will be honest, I have asked questions in the past and did not receive any answers.
There's no sign-up sheet in here for Gates.
Right, I saw no sign-up sheet for Gates for public hearing.
As I said, I have asked questions in the past and never received answers. I have been told in the past, it was advertised, but I could not find it in the newspaper.
Public hearing was...
That, that's what I'm told in the past, I did not ask this year, but...
Would it...
When I had looked in the past, I could not find where it had been advertised.
Well, there wasn't, for the other counties, there wasn't a tenant sheet, so it would have had to take place here or...
My assumption based on reading this was that it was to take place in each county.
Okay, now I'm just thinking, if it were here physically, would it have been that public hearing here or...
I would assume that you would have a public hearing for Gates County and Gates County.
And you can provide comments and that is one that I was going to provide on from my behalf, but it was a sign-up sheet, I did not see it advertised.
Yeah, I would just question for what, when was it advertised and where was it advertised? And then where's the sign-up sheet?
All of the others took place in November, so if it was publicized, it was either on the website, which probably wouldn't qualify either there or in...
That's why I'm saying.
If you just look back for November, all the others are in there.
Where was it advertised and when was it advertised?
What location's that?
What location and where's the sign-up sheet?
And you would like me to see if I can receive some answers by the January meeting or even by the first February meeting, this is not due back until February the 12th.
I wouldn't want the lack of that document to cost us some dollars.
Well, they, the service that they give, they provide for the head start, they provide bus transportation in some counties, but not in Gates.
Correct.
Okay, remember I asked.
Yes, you did, I said. And you remember what our reasoning was?
No, I did not understand the reasoning.
It was, that was a vague answer.
Ms. Laster has already left and she said she still does not understand the reasoning either.
All right, so, I'll ask the county manager to find out about the public hearing.
And we can take care of it in January, the first few words.
Well, actually, and ask for this back as soon as possible, but I can ask questions and they can, we can get it back after the January 17th meeting.
And all it says here that, said, "We hear a certum on a public hearing as required by 10A NC AC 97B 4042. Citizen participation in the application process occurred on November 28th through December the 2nd for the initial planning process for the Aces current project plan in Aces and the agency has maintained documentation to the further process of the public hearing." Now, it seemed to me that the requirement of that statute or whatever it is, it may not include all the counties, but we have not...
It does say November the 13th for Gates County on that page.
Yeah, that mobile kind of, the date and the type of hearing was held November 13th.
4.2.
But at the top, that it is November 13th, 2017, there was supposed to have been a hearing in Gates County.
What, what, we have a meeting on that day?
Page four on page 20.
They never presented their application for this and that's why Commissioner Owens was saying farther at the end of the document.
For handwritten.
There is sign-in sheets and there's, for lack of a better word, proof or an example for this one, there's actually an agenda.
It's not the proof of a court.
I doubt it is a form for a, with a public hearing.
Well, how long have we had this? I guess what I'm getting at is...
We received this once they've done all of their due diligence and complete application. We received this, what, middle of December after they're supposed to have had their public hearing and once they completed this application.
So this is the first time we've seen it.
Right.
Well, you said it was, it could be submitted electronically.
This year, as it stated, they sent it electronically and we have to print that second page and Melissa has to send, send that page back after it's signed.
What does that North Carolina document say? Because I'm thinking that maybe Gates County might have been included in one of the other counties on that page or something.
No, it was Tiel and Curra.
I looked, when I looked at the other ones, the signatures, I looked for Gates County name, one didn't jump out at me. And it may, you know, it may have been a situation where Gates County was included, but no one showed up.
So why would you call a Gates County public hearing and Terrell Encourts up with your next door to Chawan, Pastor, and Pastor Tinkin for women's work campus?
But by my understanding, you know, if we don't get the block granted, our citizens are going to be affected.
Oh, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, I think we are sometimes treated as a stepchild. But I know we don't get the bus transportation. At this public hearing, there's no, from the documents they gave us, there's no indication except a date on the page that it was held.
But until we know what North Carolina...
That's all we're asking, is that they, a question.
Madam Chairman, Madam Chairman, you know what I'm saying? Until we look at 10A NC AC 97B 4042, we have to know what that requirement is so that we can't say that we, you know, we weren't, we didn't have a public hearing required. What does that say? We don't know what it says. We do know that it's, we don't know it is entirely, but that citizen participation is a key, wouldn't you say? Well, yeah, it's, it's a key, but if no one showed up, you're not going to have anyone there, right? I'm just wondering, you know, if we're not included with Curra or someone else.
Well, that, once again, puts a hardship on our citizens to go to a public hearing. We got, got a drop of Tiel or Curra when it's, you know, we have for women's, we have Chawan, we have Pastor Tinkin that we board.
Where do they want this back?
As soon as possible. But we do have a meeting in January.
And we get, I think they check that and put it on the certificate for the 17th and see if Gates County was included on one of the other counties or where we're supposed to have it.
And if we were, I would also, if we were included with Tiel and Curra, I would voice my concern being the distance that our citizens would have to travel when it would be closer to all places. That is not being very considerate of our citizens.
The cover sheet for Gates County said that they held it in EIC building.
Yes, there is, there is something in here.
Where? All I was gonna say was the sign-up sheet.
There is no.
Yeah. Where is it, Billy? You mean, is it in the document?
There is no sign-up sheet nor does it tell in the minutes how many people attended the meeting.
Personally, I just. If you see the paper, look, Jack, you see Cook?
Yeah.
If you don't, I'll run behind that and cut it down.
I have Cook.
Yeah, it's all of them.
Is it Newt Farkworth? No.
No, it said the bathroom pool or close to it. So we're in our, yeah, we have to know where we vote or do we want to just take?
They, and their office is located at the Old Rosa Wall School where it's for election.
Right, for election. I've seen that sheet.
Yeah, I saw that here.
Is it happening, is it resting, Billy?
Yeah.
Oh, it's Lily Ann Dance, introduction. So Lily, Lily Dan Dance.
She is the person assigned at Gates County.
So they could. Her name on the other document.
For the meeting.
So she can be responsible, now if she'd be responsible, one of the contacts, correct?
She would, she could.
I'm trying to. But, um.
We just don't have a sign-up sheet.
Well, she has answers to questions, some of them, such as, is there any communication with county officials? Yes.
Call the order at 10 o'clock.
Applications are submitted to the county commissioners for review, I guess that's the, um, communication.
I did see Lily Ann Dance's name in here on other counties, so. So Natalie, you can find a couple after course.
Uh, we'll attempt to find some answers.
Thank you.
And so we will take action at, uh, so, January 17th, meeting, type of those answers or not.
If anything required, so what?
You have to provide comments. Get back to that page. It says, you have to document that it has been sent to the commissioner and clerk to the board, she'll initial the following agency submitted, complete application for commissioner review. Clerks, the board will be responsible for showing the application as distributed to the commissioner and commissioner's comments provided those to the agency.
Well, we can make the comments, and I still stand by my comments, I'd like to know how many people were in attendance and where's that visit sheet. It says, it said, it said that it was held on November 13th at the EIC building and also when, when was advertised at that?
Natalie, you gave a date to require a date, probably.
Well, the February date is actually the date that it's due for the office to be given opportunity. They want it back as soon as possible so they can submit it by February the 12th.
Well, you know, certainly, I mean, we can go ahead and approve it, but certainly I still think that we need questions answered from Ms. Dance.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve submission of the, uh, community service block grant, uh, pending, uh, correspondence with, uh, Ms. Lily Ann Dance.
With our comments included.
With the, with the question, I'll ask you.
Do you want to have a second?
I'll say.
That motion's been made, second to approve the, um, the community service block grant program for 2018, 2019 with comments included from the commissioners. Um, in a discussion.
Does this come up every January? So, so we should, so December, uh, 2018, maybe somebody should come before us. About, so November, October. Yeah, I, uh, but just in discussions, not by like a county manager, to have the EIC chairperson to pay us a visit in October. Being that the here was in November, it was passing. That's all discussion I have.
Anybody else have any comments that they'd like to include? Here none, let's vote on the measure, um, to approve the EIC Community Service Block Grant for 2018, 2019 with comments from the commissioners. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Uh, citizens' comments, has anybody signed up? Oh, yes, sir. Did you sign up?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, come, come to the podium, state your name and address, please. I think you are only one who's stuck at I today.
This is Gates, also.
Good afternoon. My name is real simple. I'm hoping that, uh, with your influence, you have something over the speed limits dealing in our county. Uh, the area of, of interest is Carter Road, uh, coming from 37, passing the River Bill, going for two miles. That stretch of road has turned into be a speedway. And there's a lot of residential homes and there's a deep curve. It's about a mile and a half from the mill. And people are speeding around that curve and residents inside of that curve in the mill are in treacherous situations sometimes, just trying to get out of their street or driveway. So I'm hoping that you would have some influence on maybe putting up signs to reduce the speed. And of course, you have the church there and on, uh, Wednesdays and Sundays. That space is very limited sometimes for cars. And people are not aware sometimes within the neighborhood that that church is there and it is sometimes full of traffic. So I'm hoping you have some influence on helping our citizens to reduce their speed. I appreciate it.
Certainly we can, um, I have DOT there for one.
They will be, they will be coming actually in February, so commissioners can address it with them then.
Okay, and we will put you on the list. I mean, we'll put that concern on.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nursing home there as well.
Yeah, nursing home.
Also may want to listen to highway patrol department and, uh, they would hate to play for that.
And sheriff's department as well, because they can enforce.
Is it February?
February, DOT.
And, um, so making a note of the intersection down here, Colorado.
And then the, um, the folly road, the, um, they wanted to grow the strips there.
The intersection.
Where it comes into 32. Okay, um, that brings us to commissioners' comments and I'd just like to thank everyone, our county employees and all for the work they did during the 2017, um, year. We certainly appreciate it, we enjoyed our party, um, too bad his colleagues left. She certainly was in charge of, um, the entertainment.
Music was great.
And music was great, we had, um, Commissioner Owens did some singing and was very good, I think. I'm sure we'll hear him on The Voice or something like that pretty soon. Um, but as we approach, um, 2018, you know, there's always a new set of challenges, um, have a lot going on. We have here about the roof over our heads, and hopefully that will help solve some of the problems. Uh, we have, of course, across the road with the, um, court highs, we have the school issues, um, just so many things that we, uh, the waste water system. So this, we have a lot of challenges this year and there's continuing the conversion of our software. But as we, and right now, I think we should be concerned because of the cold temperatures that we need to be vigilant to always, you know, call or check on our neighbors, especially our elderly neighbors or people who have medical problems. Um, because it doesn't take long for you to have high cholesterol or, um, dehydrate in this cold weather. So we need to be very vigilant, we also need to be very safe as we are driving and, uh, county employees, um, we know, be safe as you travel back and forth from work to work. And we'll let you know what will happen if weather comes, if we have snow that's predicted, um, so listen to your.
We will do a code red.
Code red call, uh, but really do check on others and check on your animals as well. Uh, they can't fend for themselves either. Uh, but I am very concerned with these cold weather snaps and we have some homes in the county that are probably all cold.
It's a new year, let's have a great one. Appreciate everybody being here and, uh, you know, Peter was before us again today and, uh, what they're concerned about is the legitimate and can be something that you can have a tendency to overlook. Or those, those dogs and things of that nature. But I hope that whatever decision we come down with, um, will address all the situations and, uh, will address all the needs of the animals. And at the same time, have our citizens' concerns about the best way for them to address the situation. Again, it's a new year and I know we're gonna have a great one, so happy new year.
I do want to thank all of our citizens for, uh, coming out and being interested and participating in our mission meeting. We hope that all the decisions that we made are gonna be a decision that's gonna be productive for the county. And, uh, hope you have a great Christmas, we're looking, hope you have a great new year. And be careful with this snow coming up supposedly tonight more.
Okay, we have one citizen left, it's always right there, Jack's already claimed. I appreciate that and I appreciate our employees' service and dedication and always open doors, willing to listen to suggestions and work things out for the best of the county. And happy new year.
Thank you, uh, I would like to also comment on the fact that the, uh, calls that all of you give us and my colleagues and myself have opportunities to discuss them, sometimes in, in our private settings. However, today was an opportunity for you to see some of them are addressed, such as the waste products and things that have affected some of our, our farming institutions and with the waste, uh, problems, also the, the, uh, our outlets for that. That many citizens have complained that, uh, folks are dumping trash from Virginia, from Collin West of Virginia here and that we're having to pay for it. So with that, I, I know that those of you that are paying attention have seen that we, as a group and your commissioners, are addressing those situations. So those decisions are all being made and glad those folks were here, thank you.
Okay, at this time, uh, we need to enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318. 11 on legal, economic, development, and real estate and personnel matters. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have, the motion is proper, made and seconded, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay, we'll take a 10-minute break and come back. I have closed session.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made, proper to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion to recess the January 17th.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made, proper to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, see all the 17th?